Hello. Hello. Okay, I'll just use my natural loud voice. Okay, this special session of the Designer Board January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, is called to order by Lori Ginnell at five thirty one P M. Role call, Bob DeCruff.
Here.
Peter Gaffer.
President.
Lori Ginnell here, John Guy.
Here.
Ben Lepley.
Here.
Okay, he's here on the phone. Doug Taylor.
Present.
Ted Schreiber.
Here.
Frank Davis, absent, and Javier.
Yes.
Here, okay, great. All right, proceeding to agenda item one, discussion and possible approval of a policy regarding cement siding, when, where, and if it can be used. If policy is set, then no exceptions can be granted. That's something to consider, okay? Who would like to kick off this conversation?
I guess I will.
All right.
I did some research and various historic districts and National Park Service. I kind of winnowed out their general attitude and I'll just bring this up for reference, but it's not, cement siding is not considered a replacement for wood siding. It's not allowed in contributing buildings, non-contributing only. In some, I have to qualify this, some jurisdictions allow it behind the buildings, you know, where it's not seen. Non-contributing as long as it's not readily visible and smooth face only. And it's allowed in new construction. And for the most part, it has to meet the dimensions of and proportions and construction techniques of historic architecture or of the historic district, you know. So if the historic district has a, you know, a bead on it, they want that on it quite often.
Okay.
It has to match the historic spacing of, you know, let's say it's a three and a half to the weather that they require that with the cement siding also. And it has to be smooth so it doesn't look that different. It actually is a green product, it turns out.
Oh, okay.
But that's not our purview here.
It isn't, but it's nice to know.
Yeah.
What are the issues with it? I'm not that familiar with cement or cement, but what's the objection, I guess, for historic?
Well, from what I was gathering from that research is that it just isn't a historic material. It's good, apparently it's a good green material, it breathes and all that stuff. But from a, you know, use in historic buildings, it was okay with non-contributing structures and new construction, but not in, you know, they, these guidelines were very strict on what can happen with a contributing.
Yeah, does it look that different?
Not if you use the smooth and if you use the proportions, let's say there's a, you know, three and a half inches to the weather.
Yeah.
If you use that proportion, it's going to look just like the other one, a whole paint and, you know, it's actually supposed to last fifty years, but it hasn't been around that long to, you know, live that reputation.
Well, I'm new to this, so.
Yeah.
I'll let my questions skew my feelings, but if it looks the same, let's.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, can I speak next?
Yes, of course you may, yes.
Now, understanding everything Doug has said, and obviously they're the facts, the concern I have is flammability. And I think, given that we're having problems getting houses insured in this town, I just don't know as a body how we can tell someone they come put cement siding on their house. If it means that we become, we lose the status, then we lose the status. I don't know, Joe, do you want to weigh in on it? Because as the building inspector, do you think, do you think it contributes to fire protection significantly?
I don't know if it's significant, but definitely does.
Yeah.
You know, you say significantly, I'm not sure what level that significantly comes in, but.
I don't know if there's any, I mean, sure.
If you had, if you had flame up along the house, it's not going to catch on that side anymore.
Right.
And wood siding, it's more likely to.
Yeah.
But usually it's partial, so isn't that a moot point then if it's a mostly wood house and they've got, they're just patching something with cement siding, the house is going to go up anyway, right?
And if the fire starts from inside the house, then you're, but I think we're more concerned about embers flying in from woodlands and off the hillside.
Right, right, so much of it is up in the eaves area where the fire starts.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe has mentioned that before, I think on Oak Street we talked about that.
I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, I would think that we could approve it for new construction, obviously.
Yeah.
And for, you know, non-contributing structures perhaps.
Yeah.
But for, not for contributing structures, I wouldn't think that would be an issue.
I would agree, only because whatever the contributing structure's siding is, that's what you want to use. The other thing is that if you are building an accessory building or an extension to a contributing structure, one of the, one of the rules is that you make it look just a tiny bit different.
Right, exactly.
Definitely if you're building something new onto an existing house, I don't see why we wouldn't allow it that.
Yeah, I think that.
And I think we can count that as new construction.
Right, I think that's reasonable.
But even if it's, you know, not, not an accessory building, but it just, you know, you build a new kitchen.
An addition, yeah.
Well, for example, the chocolate house.
Yes.
Very visible, would you allow, I wouldn't think so.
I think that's a contributing, I have to remember, I don't know.
If you're contributing building, but he.
He put wood back on.
He did, but what, but what you're saying is it would be okay not to put wood. And I would disagree with that.
Yeah.
I have to say, I'd want to see wherever's in the contributing, it can.
Because you didn't really do an addition, you tore down what was there.
Yeah, now if that still has.
We're not disagreeing.
If that still has contributing status, I would say that it can't have the cement siding.
Right.
If it were a non-contributing and the front was wood and they left it that way, that back, those backs tend to be, like in that particular case, was right up against, you know, the landscape essentially, the wall and the, you know, the vegetation, that may be more of a hazard for fire. I don't know, and Joe knows way better than I about how this works, but I don't know if that would save it, but maybe if it was not visible in a non-contributing, that would be better. But if it's contributing, and I think that's where we've been sort of losing the edges of our historic district is in the contributing, I think that's what we're here for. I think if it, if it's used in new construction and non-contributing construction, we can say, if everybody wants to, that replacement on a contributing is not, you know, an option.
And new construction would be, you would not want grain on there.
Right.
Like in a new construction.
Yeah, I think so, I think you just want smooth, I think that it looks more like, you know, a plain board. And the, the grain tends to look like something, you know, that might be in a rustic lodge or something that has really pronounced grain.
Right. Dean, you and I talked very briefly at the end of the last meeting that perhaps as we go through these, we need to have, let's say on the Y axis, a list of all of the conditions, that is to say.
Yes.
Commercial, non-commercial, contributing, non-contributing, addition, replacement, fix-up, new construction, so on.
Yeah.
And if we have that list and then along the top, we could, on the X axis as it were, we could say this is allowed, this is, or preferred, I don't know whether we want to do that. The thing is, I guess, if, when we're all, when this is all done, when we get through this, and I'm sure it's going to take more than one session.
Right.
To hammer it out, and it becomes the law of the land, so to speak, it would just mean that applicants would, if they don't like it and they want special variants, then they would go to the Board of Adjustments.
Yeah.
And I think we don't use that opportunity enough. If we want to make ourselves consistent, and I may or may not agree with the rest of the board, but the one thing I do want is consistency, because that's what we get banged on all the time.
Right.
So if we set the rules hard and fast and then, but we promote the use of the Board of Adjustments if people want to go in a different direction, that way I think we keep, we keep our reputation, we elevate our reputation a little bit, because I think that was your point, wasn't it, Joe, the other day? We're just all over the place.
We get, we get a lot of, we get a lot of complaints about that.
Yeah, and we want to just hold the line on what, and I do think from what you were saying about the non-contributing, I think you were saying, that I would like to see us hold a really strong line on contributing.
Yes.
I don't think that if someone's not getting the tax break, that they should have to live by the same code. And if it's non-contributing, it'll still look, you know, you want it to still look like it should, but, you know, if it, it's not Disneyland, so it can't all look like an antique little Victorian village.
No.
But there are, I don't know how many contributing there are, I think over two hundred contributing in Old Bisbee. And if those were all to remain contributing, you know, I think we'd be great.
Yeah.
And new construction, you know, doesn't, you know, I don't think it should be willy-nilly, but it, but I don't think it matters exactly the materials, I wouldn't put key one.
I mean, as, as in the side, we had, two weeks ago, we had one guy who was building a miners' cabin up on the.
Yes, Steve.
And it surprised me that everybody thought that was such a good idea. I thought it was a good idea, but it surprised me because it does look too authentic. And I thought that was one of the, one of the things that we should do. I, I mean, I voted for it and I'm not changing my mind, but I was surprised that the rest of you thought it was a good idea.
Here's my position, I think that if it's new construction and it looks authentic, I think that's great.
Yeah.
Because it, you know, maintains sort of this consistency of the historic feeling. But the whole thing is if it's a contributing structure and you're doing an addition and it looks like it was part of the old house, that's against the rules.
Yeah.
You know, so, but being brand new, I think a charming little miners' cabin, you know, is awesome.
It was a great project, yeah, I thought it looked pretty good.
I, I think.
We certainly would allow non-authentic materials in that case.
Yeah, 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 because it's now of this time, this time has different technology.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yes.
I got a bit of a concern about new materials in general. You know, these places were built in nineteen oh five, right, roughly?
Yes.
And there have been tremendous advances in all kinds of material, even glass, right? So this sort of locks out technology. And I know at some point it's going to clash with historic, you know, priorities, but it seems if it looks the same, somebody drives by and says, boy, that's beautiful, they don't know if it's new or old, but yet it may, it may be more durable. I wasn't aware of the fire issue, that, you know, there must be ratings for that certain way. But if we, if we stick to original materials, it takes away a lot of choices for people. You know, exterior siding, this stuff may, may rot away in four or five years if cement or, let's say, lasts ten or fifteen years, I don't know about installing materials, but, or properties. But I think we're going to face this with all new technology issues, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, we do make, you know, like we are, we're pretty lenient around solar as long as it's installed, you know, in a way that's not really ugly and obvious.
Yeah, but even glass, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
But even glass, you know, I have a few old original glass paints in mine, and you can tell right away, you know, it's wavy and pimples in it.
Yeah.
But, you know, we seem to be okay with modern glass, right?
I would, yeah, well, because you can't, I mean, it's hard to get old glass replaced.
That's certainly an issue. I don't know, it's, I'm not hard over in my opinion, but I think we're going to clash with new technology issues.
And I think that's why they've separated the contributing from the non-contributing, even in the seventies when they did this, is that, let's say you have an old hutch that was built by Stickley in nineteen hundred, and you can get it in plastic wood from Ikea, almost similar, you know, very similar lines, but it's nowhere near what it was. And if you, you know, take the doors off and put plastic doors on it, it becomes not what it was. I think that these contributing structures are sacred to the historic district. Now, and Peter and I were just talking about, you know, maybe the citizens that are against this preservation of certain buildings, maybe they need to vote against having an historic district. In general, it will hurt the people who are getting tax breaks in order to keep the materials in the proper range.
Yeah.
So I think you're, you're completely right on brand-new construction. You're partially right, and I'm not saying you're not right, but, but you're partially right on non-contributing. But on contributing, I think we owe it to the historic district and the citizens to have that held to a higher, a higher standard.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Ward wanted to add to this, didn't he?
Sure.
Part of the authenticity of these, of these historic structures is the materials that they're building.
Absolutely, yeah.
And you can't, you can't lose sight of that either.
Right.
Yeah, well, you know, at the national level, they seem very, pretty clear about it. And, you know, to be in sync with that is probably pretty important, so.
I wanted to see if Ben had anything to add on the phone there, Ben. Can I put him against a microphone or something? Go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, on the market, there are other quote-unquote fake materials like concrete rocks, plastic rocks, wallpaper rocks, wallpaper brick, you know, and so if you're drunk and you're looking at the wallpaper brick in a bar, behind the bar, it looks real, right? So, you know, I think, I think we have to draw the line and, but my line is not, well, it looks like this. That's, that's not where my line is, my line is, is it wood? It's wood.
Right.
Oh, okay, great, so it's wood, perfect. And, and I agree with Doug Taylor that, you know, if it's, if it's contributing or not, it's another very easy delineation to make. And if it's, if it's not contributing or it's new construction, then I think, you know, we should grant the maximum flexibility, especially when it comes to fire and termites. Sorry, I'm old.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of where I'm, where I'm at.
And I have been involved with historic districts where the tools that created, you know, probably still in Massachusetts, the tools that created the woodwork, the, you can see the plane marks and the saw marks, and that to me is really special. The hand of the craftsman.
Yeah.
We don't really have that here. And probably Peter, in, in Britain, they actually have guidelines for the interiors. You can't change, you know, walls and things like that, and I think maybe on the East Coast they have that here. But I know that there are stricter rules than we have here. But I do think because we have contributing and non-contributing, and I agree with you, Ben, that that's a good delineation right there.
There is a, so, and I think you touched on preservation a little bit.
Yeah.
And I agree, we, if you can preserve it, absolutely preserve it. Unfortunately, some of these houses, and I'm living it, there's nothing there to preserve. So there has to be an alternate material that you put on it, whether it's wood, a concrete board, or whatever the siding is. If you can take some of that preservable material and bring it forward so that the public gets a good view of what it used to look like in nineteen ten, and we have an opportunity to backfill with some of the alternate materials, I think making that distinction between maybe rehabbing a building and preserving a building or preserving the materials is important, especially if we can use some of those alternative, if you put twenty-five percent of your building has concrete board on it, it's twenty-five percent more fire retardant. You know, it's not like it's, yes, there's still seventy-five percent of the building that's, that's vulnerable. However, that, you know, any gain you get is something.
Right.
So an opportunity to use some of those alternate materials in less visible areas if we can bring forward some of the original materials, I think is a huge plus for the town.
Well, I agree with you, although having sat on this, this board long enough and been involved pre, prior to that, there is a line that, you know, we have to almost have a standard. And I think that the contributing shouldn't have the new materials, they should, it should be really replaced with materials that are of like. And otherwise, if they want to decommission it from contributing to non-contributing, you know, I think that's okay. But I do think that, you know, as a historic district, we have to have some line that we don't cross. And I think we cross the line a lot. We had one a few weeks ago, I think, or a few months ago maybe it was, that Todd Conlin brought to us that the house was such a wreck, and it was a wood house, but it was such a wreck that it was on the verge of being torn down, I think, that the one on.
Youngblood.
Youngblood, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And that we allowed just about anything that would save the building. We've done that before with, with, and those aren't, that wasn't a contributing building, but we've done that before with the windows, if they leave the window opening the same dimension, they don't reframe it, they just put a new, maybe a fiberglass window or something like that, and it, we've, we've let that go. But I think that the reason we're having this meeting is that we've come to the crossroads where we should really decide, is this, you know, where are we going to hold the line? And that, I think, is clear in that the contributing versus non-contributing. And we can even rule out the new construction from even, I don't, you know, should come under our consideration, but it, then it's purely visual.
Do we, do we, this is probably a legal question, do we give people the option to become non-contributing? I don't know that we do.
We never have.
No.
I, I don't think we'd want to, you know, in those buildings.
But, but, but.
In the tax break.
But if somebody says, well, there's no, no, no way I'm going to put wood siding on, I live next to, very close to another house, there's Italian cypresses all over the place, you know, I'm going to go up like, you know, then I guess my attitude is go to the, go to the.
Go to Warren.
No.
I mean, I'm with you on that.
Go to the Board of Adjustments?
Go to the Board of Adjustments.
San Jose's a lovely place.
And I think this is, this is where I'm coming from, if, if we, if we, if we want to establish rules so that we don't keep embarrassing the building inspectors, then we'll stick to the rules, but we won't break the rules. If the rules have to be broken, then they're broken by another board, not by this one.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, there does come a point where somebody's going to say, there's absolutely no way I'm going to put wood up again.
But if Ben begs the question, why did you buy in a, in a historic district?
Maybe they bought it fifty years ago.
Yeah, that, that.
Well, I mean, I bought our place, well, now going on almost five and a half years, and we've done a lot of work to the place. And it was several spots where they were plywood instead enclosed. And I had to, I wanted to, I wanted the siding to match. I had no problem getting anything to match the house that was built pre-natural. I had no problem.
In, in wood, in, in a natural material.
Exactly what it was that the house you built in, okay? And that's, that's true with windows and everything else, so just don't have a problem. And, you know, we take in the house and it looks, I bought it a lot, you know, just brought it up to almost perfect condition.
Yeah.
And it was in excellent condition when we bought it, but, so that's one thing. The other thing is, the, when I was asked to be on this board, I was, I could have Ken said, well, you know, you know, in the DRB, you can be on the, what's it, Board of Adjustments? You know, because they meet occasionally. Don't they have certain guidelines that they have to follow too? Can they just override anything? Like, we, we have our standards.
They can override anything.
Yeah, they can.
They can, however, they, I know, I know of one, Joe would probably say more than one, where it has gone to the Board of Adjustments and the Board of Adjustment that supported our position.
Yeah, I, I can think of one.
Joe and I probably know about the second one.
They've gotten better, that's for certain.
They've got, I can think of one, isn't a good answer. You're right.
The reason I really wanted to be here tonight is this whole consistency thing.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree.
It doesn't help anybody when we're all over the place.
Well, it was very difficult to have that conversation with that one woman in that last meeting, well, you know, with, with windows.
With the termites, yeah.
Well, you know, well, it's this, and the money issue, and this and that, it's, it's just not, it's not our problem. Good guidelines is the answer.
Yeah, and, and I think they've given us a, the, I think that we've let the, as a, as a district have let the rules erode. The National Park Service has given us a directive, the Secretary of the Interior gave us a very strong directive, and we haven't followed that. And, you know, I'm a bit, you know, I know that this isn't a perfect world. I'm a bit open to non-contributing being less authentic, but I think if it's, if it's a, you know, there's, there's a fabric and then there's the icon within that fabric. And I think the icons have to be treated like antiques. And they shouldn't buy them if they, if they, and I know that a lot of people don't even know they have an historic home until after they've closed on it, but we're trying to work on that.
In my previous life, I was a furniture designer for a company called Kittenger. And that company reproduced furniture for Williamsburg, and that started in nineteen thirty-five. And they had certain levels, it was called CW, was the exact reproduction. And it was WA, which was, it looks, the wood, it was all, the design was there, the wood was there, but you could take more modern construction. We'd go to this, we'd go to this, we would go down to Williamsburg to reproduce a piece of furniture. If it, if they made, it lets, you would say that that was a mistake, that was copied. It was an exact reproduction when you bought that, and that's what you paid for. And you had Italian carvers carving these things. And, and this is basically what we're talking about here, contributing structure.
These houses are like a piece of furniture.
Well, it's just that they are authentic and we want to keep them that way.
Yeah, and people, you know, they pay enormous amounts of money to have a true Stickley chair. And I think that that's the same.
My former boss went to Stickley.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, my mentor, yeah.
And I think that we're in a position here where there are certain people who are given a tax break, which is supposed to support the keeping, the upkeep of it, it's like a wooden.
I certainly appreciate that tax break.
Yeah, yeah, it is a good thing. And I think that that's where. And I think that that's where, that to me is, and I'd like it to be, in my world, I'd like it to all be handmade and, you know, but we, I know that's not realistic, but I do think we have these contributors, that they're expecting us to hold that standard and hold that line, and I think we haven't, and it's really disappointed me over time. But I'm more radical than most people.
But I think also, the board, that criticism that the board has received, I think, has a lot to do with the changeover. And the more it's written down.
Yes.
The changeover isn't going to affect that.
I also think it's exaggerated, to a degree.
Well, that may be.
People like to complain about us because they don't get what they want.
Yes.
You know what I mean? So, you know, you can take it with a grain of salt. I think we're, we're trying to be fair to people.
But.
Then also, here are.
If it's written down in as precisely as possible as Peter was saying.
Yeah.
You know, like an outline, this, this, yes, and this. The more specific we can be, the easier it is for us.
I think we have a consensus, right, on what we wanna do?
I think so. Well, I think that, what, what I think moving forward is, we're not gonna necessarily take votes, are we?
Yes.
We, well, we can, we can vote, we can, we can put the vote off until we have it written down precisely what we want.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have tonight the complete unless we stay until the.
Yeah, well, I was afraid of.
We're gonna be here all night.
Yeah, it's possible approval. So, what we can do is, like, can somebody volunteer to write down what we've discussed? Cement siding is not a replacement for wood, so it's a, it's a no on contributing structures.
Yeah, yeah, but I think, yeah, but there's, and then I think we, there's several categories.
Yeah, there's the smooth-based only, there's.
Well, the categories of structure, you know, commercial, non-commercial, or whatever, contributing, non-contributing, new, accessory, accessory buildings. I mean, there's probably twenty.
Yeah, there's a bunch.
Twenty, and I do think that's would help everybody if we were to list them.
Yes. Do, do you wanna do that, or do you?
I mean, ordinarily, I would. I'm right in the middle of doing some other stuff. Doug, can I, could you do that?
Sure.
Would you mind?
No.
And, and if you wanna bounce back and forth, I don't mind.
No, that's fine.
I just don't wanna volunteer for anything right now, otherwise. But that's, if we can get that list, and then, you know, what all the options are along the top. And I would think that same Y-axis, when we get to the window discussion, would be the same list.
Yeah, that's an excellent, that's excellent.
Yes.
And possibly even roofing material, but I don't think we've discussed that, but.
Yeah, we don't have that.
But certainly, I mean, the, the big ticket items are the, is the siding. The windows, we're gonna be here for a lot longer than thirty minutes.
Well, right, exactly. Windows is a big deal.
Yeah. But, yeah, if we could.
No, I'd not put that together.
And then maybe when we meet in two weeks' time.
And take it to our regular meeting?
Yeah, if, 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 if that's possible, to put that on the.
It's like, like a basic outline.
Yeah.
Moving forward to all, all the, for all these things that we have to deal with, that's a great idea.
Yeah, so, but they're the two, they're the two, but maybe one for doors, one for windows, one for siding.
Yeah, not like, same commercial building, non-contributing, yes, excellent idea.
Yeah, a, a matrix would probably be helpful.
Yes, exactly. And then, you know, even in, within the matrix, it's probably not necessarily just a absolute yes. It could be a preferred, which would be, say, in, in, in non-contributing, it would still be preferred, but not absolute, you know, so someone wants, wants to lean in a certain direction.
Yeah.
We're okay with that, but we will let them get away with something else as long as it's not aluminum or.
Just one more thought.
Yeah.
When I listen to all this, it's very compelling, so I've sort of changed my opinion on all this, but I think you mentioned that a big part of this is education. The shack next to me, it's across from about Ben as well, is up for sale. There's not much left of it. So, who, my fear is somebody's gonna buy that thing and think that they can fix it for a hundred grand, where in reality, they might have spent two hundred, two hundred fifty grand, right, or more. And somehow, we gotta get this, this feeling evident to, to the real estate people, like, soon.
We, we have done that in the past.
And they don't always tell the truth to the potential buyers. Not everybody, but some.
They're just trying to make a sale.
Sure, but that's gotta be fixed, 'cause that's in the heart of a lot of this stuff.
Well, just as, as a side, Bob, if I could ask, 'cause I, I walk that way, I live very close, just down that.
Oh, okay.
Valley from you.
What street are you on?
How, how did that come to be, that particular house that's in back of Bob's? I watched that guy destroy that part of that building, and I don't know that he lived there at that time.
I was, he was doing it while I, just when I bought it.
So, so did he have a?
What, what's the location? I don't.
Uh, right, in Cross, do you know where Ben lives?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's between my house and.
Oh, Richie Green's place, yeah. That place was a.
It was, but was, was it allowed to be demolded? Or he just?
Yeah, they, they were.
That's what I wanted. That, that was all I was. I had that. Go ahead, man.
Yeah, they, yeah, they, they removed, Richie Green removed an addition that was not original, so, and then right after he removed it, he, he passed away.
Oh, was that what happened?
Um, the original form of the building is intact, except for there's an addition on the front that he was about to remove. But as far as the, yeah, the original form is there, and actually, I volunteered and put that metal roofing on in an emergency, me and somebody else, so.
I, I was just curious, it has, how, how that came to be, but it's not really.
Well, we have, we have someone here on the board that had a house that, several years ago, people wanted to tear it completely down, Mr. Guy.
Yeah.
And they went before this board, were turned down, went before Board of Adjustment, and were turned down, sold the house, and Mr. Guy made it into a livable, lovable house.
Awesome.
Yeah, but it, you know, it's gotta be somebody that's educated about the historic issues, has got the passion for it. But, you know, I was one of them, you got people from communities coming in and think, wow, I like Bisbee, they're just gonna, you know, either rehab or buy something that's already done, so. I don't wanna belabor it, but I think it's expectations. You know, if I had come in here not familiar with what everybody here said, I'd be pissed if I was turned down.
Well, and people do get this, and it would be nice if the Realtors would explain that this is a historic district. If you're gonna be, you know, like, if you wanna buy a tiny house and make it a big house, you're probably gonna run into some trouble.
Sure.
'Cause we're like, why'd you buy a tiny house if you wanted a big house? You should have bought a big house.
Perfect example was Britt's old house that Tom.
Sparsa.
Yeah, I mean, Britt, Britt came before the board and had a plan, and it was more like a Florida home.
Three times he came.
Did he, yeah, and then he had enough and sold the place, and, well, and Tom bought it, and, you know, made that, it's a gem, it's beautiful. So, it happens.
Yeah.
To, to your point, and, and, so that's, that's on us.
Yeah, well, it seems, again, that's another issue in, in a way, but it seems like it almost has to be mandatory on somebody's checklist when they purchase property, have you reviewed the historic guidelines, to say, you know, upfront, 'cause it could make a few hundred thousand dollar difference.
Well, the Pioneer Title, they do have pamphlets that are from the city.
Uh-huh.
And they really should be, those are given in each package of someone who buys an old Bisbee. They should be reading.
Well, it's a lot better than it was two years ago, or three years ago. It was people were just not informed at all, and I think the Realtors have been making an effort. And they do know that the city, and, and, and some members in the board made a pamphlet and handed those out a couple of years ago, and I think they actually did improve things quite a lot. Do you think it's bad now? Oh my God, it was so much worse before. So, I, I, you know, and maybe it's time for another round of pamphlets and go to the Realtors' office, but I, I think they are educating the public.
Good. So, should we move on to Agenda Item Two so that we're not spending the night here?
Yeah. Oh, that's just another night.
Okay, so we are gonna close Agenda Item One and postpone approval until we have a written description of, of what is acceptable and what is not. Agenda Item Two, discussion and possible approval of amendments to zoning code Article Seven, sign regulations. So, we have them in our packet. You wanna look at them? Do you have it?
No.
Do you need it? You guys need it?
I'll, I'll listen first.
Okay. All right.
I didn't know there was a packet.
There is another, who has the packets? Somebody brought, you have extra packets?
I don't.
Oh, you don't?
Yeah, don't worry about it.
All right, okay. Here, you wanna look at this?
Sure.
And take a, take a look see. I think there's.
Laurie, can I ask a question on this? I, I did pick up a packet, so I've got it in.
Yes, there's two in there, right?
What exactly is the genesis of this? I'm old, and I forget, so.
Well.
Is, is this text in writing and strikeout, I guess it's, is it red?
Yeah.
I'm colorblind.
Okay, yes, it's red.
Is this prepared by the city?
Yes.
For our review, is that the story?
Did you prepare it, or?
I did not.
No, no, I think Nina did. And it originally was brought up by Ed. He wanted us to review the.
Yeah, somebody came for us on Main Street and wanted off-site signage for their properties.
Now, now I remember, thank you.
And then it started with sandwich boards, it moved on to the next proposal after the sandwich boards, which was, you know, the sign between one and three Main Street, the little alleys.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I was bad.
That's where, that's where the genesis of it was, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think that's very helpful, thank you.
And so.
So, the question is, now, do we all agree on this language? Have we all studied it?
Yeah, so red is the changes. Did you look at it?
Yeah, I saw it.
Oh, you did?
I saw it, yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, so, I read through this, I mean, I don't.
It seemed to make sense.
Real issues with any of it.
Did, did Ed, was he the author of some of this?
No.
Oh.
No, I think Nina took notes from our conversations, and, and then did these. Have you looked at this, Joe?
I have.
Did you have any opinions about this?
I think, I think the more specific we can be, the less trouble that we have.
I agree.
And, you know, some of these things are unsaid, and they needed to be said. Well, most of these things, actually, they sound a bit.
Yeah.
So, Joe, if, if you don't mind, either.
Uh, not at all, please.
This, under seven point five point one, the historic overlay sign regulations, G is a red, a new red one? But it doesn't say it's not allowed. I think it means that, that, that an off-site commercial sign that advertises the used product, service, or activity is not allowed, is that my understanding? It, shouldn't it have a, a little disclaimer there that it's not allowed? 'Cause right now, it's just saying something about a kind of sign. So, G?
Oh, that is, that is a, just to give a, this is, this is, I think it's a explanation, this is the definition of off-site signage.
Oh, okay, so that's the definition, okay, great.
Off-site commercial signage.
Okay.
So, so it's a definition that's.
Okay, so, okay.
And this is a reaction to, like, the trucks and things that have.
Yeah, and some of the, you know, people, one of the proposals of that, of that landowner was that they would have a directory sign on Main Street for something that was on Shearer.
Actually, I didn't have a problem with that. If, if the sign looks appropriate, because I do think, you know, just, it's also helpful for visitors to see, you know, right down here, there's more shops.
Well, that was the one that we did approve.
Yeah.
It said Subway Shops or something like that. But to list all the shops, I think, is, is not.
It's a little odd, because there's quite a few shops.
Yeah, and they'll change, and, you know, so I think that, you know, I think having directory signs throughout the town saying, you know, there's more shops up, up on the top of the hill, I think those are great, but the, having a, a multiple sign with vendors' names on it on public property is a, is a bad thing.
Right, so you know the alley between the bank and that other shop, and they, so they wanted to list, like, you know, Kafka, and, like, Grass Stop, and Redbone, and, like, all the shops, and have them, like, hanging.
I thought he came up with a great alternative. It looks great.
We're gonna, we're gonna review it in two weeks' time. It's coming back to us, I think.
Is this a building sign?
Oh, I didn't see the alternative.
Is it on the building?
Alternative, yeah, it's, it's on the bill.
Oh, one on the bill. I think that's, that's fine. That's when you put it on a whole nother street.
No, no, I remember that. No, I, I think the one on the bill, you can actually see that.
Yeah.
Through the alleyway.
Yeah.
And if you have a sign like you were saying, more shops, and then.
Yeah, I think that was the way to go. And I, and that actually was historically correct, that one that he was doing on the building.
Yeah, it looked great.
Yeah, that was good.
And the PMZ Commission is, will be, you know, will be recommending this to City Council, but it comes to you guys first for the portion that relates to the historic district.
Right, right.
I, I agree with Doug, the wording on G should be something, it's not, it doesn't fit in the, in the way this.
Yeah, maybe it should say definition.
And hang on, we've got, we've got H, and then it goes back to G, so if nothing else, it should be I.
They just didn't have, to say, is there another G? Oh, yeah, there is.
There is, I.
It is G?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, G's not.
So, Doug, since you raised it, you caught us, how do you think this should be worded?
Well, I think, based on what Joe just said, I think it should say off-site commercial signage definition, and then the rest of it. So, we just, all we have to do after signage before the, the colon is have definition.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that would be fine.
Or definition of quote, of, you know, off-site commercial signage.
Well, make it into a sentence.
In there. So, definition of off-site commercial.
No, he's got it.
No, I, I think it should read, off-site commercial signage, colon, is defined as.
Yes, you're right, that would be way better.
So, so I got a question on this, I mean, it's, it's specifically saying sandwich boards and portable signs, but does it stop there? I mean, the sandwich, the, the signs that people pick up and put inside their shop in the evening, does it stop at that, or, or are we talking about the vehicles which the big advertise a good business?
I don't know if we've specifically, we've batted this about so much that I may have lost that. I know that the, the sandwich signs looked, it looked appropriate. Do we have anything that, Joe, do you know that?
I think there's something in here about signs on vehicles.
Well, it says portable signs, so that, I guess it could be interpreted.
We should have something that, that.
I gave away my.
And then Laura stole it, sorry. Did I steal it?
Did we not put that anywhere?
I was just.
Oh, signs on parked vehicles.
He has the other. Or did I steal his?
Seven point four point seven, signs on parked vehicles.
There it is, yeah, I thought there was one.
Yeah, I thought we had, I think we already have a rule for that.
But that general, not specific, could have historic.
Is across the board, right? Yeah, well, that's what you get when you have zoning, you know, it's, I mean, historic is zoning, but it's, you know, specific over there. Yeah, do you think it has enough teeth for the historic, or should we have some more on there?
So, as long as it's deemed a commercial vehicle.
You know, we kind of, when we, when we adopted the signs on, on parked vehicles, it was kind of, it was kind of rushed because it was specific on, you know, and I remember
it was kind of, it was kind of rough because it was specific on, you know, and I remember somebody telling me, somebody much wiser than me a long time ago, or some, a couple of years ago, saying that you, you never want to make a, make a, a rule based on one thing that happens. And this is kind of in one of those things, that it could be, and it could be, this wording was, what I kind of merged between Cochise County and services, if I remember correctly, and it could be a whole lot better.
Okay.
So, okay, here, here's an example. So the people at the, what's it called, the B Active?
Yeah.
Bicycle, Rattle, Electric Bike Place. So they own a van that has their advertising on it and they park it in front of their house. I mean, they should be able to do that.
I think so.
Yeah, and that's.
And they do park it downtown too.
Yes, they do.
And they park it downtown, but that's their vehicle.
Yeah, so, the one that I'm thinking of is the, is.
Dots Diner, yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't know.
Trouble is, it's a really, really cool.
It's really cool, I love it, yeah, I love it, it's so cute.
That's the problem.
And it's vintage, it's old.
And, and I didn't have a problem with John Sky, Sky High Construction that he had out there, except that he was parked oddly in the middle of the street or, you know.
Well, yeah, that's.
So that, I think, was more of the issue than his signage.
That's a different issue.
Because vehicles, lithic vehicles are parked along Nacho Road all the time. I don't think you can avoid that.
And they're being used, they're being used in a business by somebody that lives in that neighborhood.
Right.
Well, it's, it's no less than reasonable.
Right, and so banning it, you know, I almost think the only offender, and it's not offensive to me, I should clarify, but the only one that I can think of is, is the Dots Diner that might be offensive to somebody. But for years, the Bisbee Coffee Company, or whatever that little cafe is called, had a motor home that was parked in the corner of that parking lot, and it was all about that, you know, I, and I understand that we probably don't have this, I, I didn't reread this, this section, but we probably don't exclude private property, and that lot has become private, you know, more private than it was. It's a pay lot, I know he's paying.
You know, there's that army vehicle that sits out there by the Castle Rock?
Yes.
With a, with a big plastic banner on it?
Yeah.
And I don't like that personally.
Right.
But I'm not gonna, if I can't, if I can't enforce, enforce it on everybody, I can't, I don't want to, if I can't enforce it on one, I can't enforce it on anybody.
I totally agree, you know, that we've talked about lack of enforcement, you know, and more in zoning than we have here, but the lack of enforcement ability is a big deal. Is this a, some battlefield we want to die on, is this commercial vehicles thing? You know, we do have a somewhat of an ordinance. It may not be thorough, but it's, it's there. If we had to, if somebody abused it, so far I haven't seen it really abused.
I think if it was a real big problem, we could revisit it, you know, at another time, but.
But that's not what we're really here doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, you're right, we're talking about the, the actual signage.
We're within the, the, what's, what's on the agenda, but that's not what the specifics.
Right, right, it's about that, it's more about that billboard thing that, that said, all these shots are.
Right, and it's about the parked and ran.
So my question about the vehicles is, I mean, we are, we're proposing to make changes to. So we're proposing to make changes to portable signs and, okay, I understand, you know, we don't want a sandwich board in the middle of the road, but portable sign is, is way up for interpretation. And I, in my opinion, becoming more specific about this just gives all of this legs to grow into something else. If someone has a beef with their neighbor and they've got a truck parked in front of their building with the, do we really want to go there? I mean, to your point, is this something that we really want to?
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, putting more definition in and being more specific, great, it's fantastic, but portable signs is, that's really up for interpretation.
Now, is the Catholic Church sign that's on the corner, that, that parking? That parking, it's that wavy one now that's stuck out there that I thought we disapproved?
There was an N O V sign on that one.
Pardon me? Notice about this?
Either today or yesterday.
I'm sorry?
I noticed a violation?
Yeah.
So, so that they can, they can, if they, if they get obeyed, then they're gonna wind up with a citation?
So we did say something, because I remember disapproving that and it's been there for several weeks now.
Is that the parking sign?
Yeah, now it's a wavy flag right across from, so we are.
We are addressing that, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Some of these though are against a lot of prohibitions, like the vehicles, you know, a lot of municipalities have resorted to vehicles to subvert other ordinances against fixed signs. And I think, depending on where you are, you're not allowed to limit that. So you might want to check, you know, with our lawyer on some of these things.
And when, if it, when it would go to zoning, Joe asked this.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay, I, I actually think that what we have is sufficient. I mean, there's the issue of other portable signs, which is, vehicles are differentiated here, so hopefully that would not become.
Well, I think what sort of was the trigger for this was, for a while, yeah, the sandwich boards, for a while, the cornucopia had.
That's what I was just reading, cornucopia.
Cornucopia, the Fiber Arts, do we, you know, the ladies at the Fiber Arts, that's a great spot, but it's hidden, so, you know, how do you find it? That's always there.
Yeah.
And the Grass Stop is the other, the other one that, I mean, they're out on Main Street, you know, I don't know. I hate to nitpick on everybody, but, you know, we have to have rules.
I'm gonna, may I make a proposal? If we table this, we all look at it again, or for the first time, and we, we vote on it or we, we put it again at the, as a final item on the two weeks' time?
Yeah, yeah.
So we just, we discussed it, I'm, I brought up to speed, I apologize because I'd forgotten about.
And I'll put that matrix together for the signage, no, I'm not doing that.
All right, that would be, is that, is that, I'm suggesting?
No, that's, that's, that's fine.
Do we have to vote on it?
No.
I don't think so.
So, but we would ask Manuel to make sure it's on the agenda for, for the next, that we would possibly vote on this guy.
Can you?
We're gonna put all these sort of on the index.
Can, can, can you do a motion to put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Okay, do we have a motion for Agenda Item Number Two, Mr. Leffler?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for Agenda Item Two to table it and for further review and discussion with the possibility of a vote at the February seventh meeting.
I second that motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. Okay, that passes unanimously.
I have number three.
Item Three, Discussion and Possible Approval of a Policy Regarding French/Patio Doors, When, Where, and If They Can Be Used. If policy set, then no exceptions can be granted.
I think this one falls, if you don't mind me.
No, go ahead.
I think this falls into the same category as Item One. It should probably be part of the matrix. I, I, you know, my gut says non-contributing in new constructions, no brainer. So maybe that and windows, I think when we come to windows.
Same, same type of thing.
Yeah, so I think those will be things we, we talk about in two weeks.
Yeah, and we probably need another session of.
Well, yeah, we should do a second special session.
You wish to table it?
I think, yes, yes, thank you. We should table it, but that's the chairs, John.
Yeah, yeah. So are we, but, okay, for, for Agenda Item One, we're gonna create a little matrix that is listing what we discussed.
Yes, but it will include doors, windows.
It will include doors and windows.
Yeah, and all, and materials, and, you know, I'm gonna do the best I can to cover all of it. We'll probably look at it and say, oh, it should have something about roller skates.
Yeah, I know, I'm thinking that we have one matrix for siding, one matrix for.
That's what I was.
One matrix for windows.
Oh, we can do that, yeah.
Keep it simple.
But it's the same, I believe it's gonna be the same format.
Format, yeah.
Don't get lost in the matrix.
I had thought it would just be one big, yeah, that's way better to do one for each thing.
Yeah, they just don't mix it up. One, one, one outline.
And so if we are going to do that, and we want to discuss what we think the policy should be on French doors?
No.
No.
Not to waste. I think Doug is gonna have something in front of us. That's gonna make it super easy for us to say yes, no, yes, no.
Right, hopefully.
I think.
Yeah, your, your faith in me is great.
It's enormous, yeah.
Now I gotta get some, now you gotta get cracking, I have to get faith in myself.
So, Agenda Item Three is tabled until the next special session.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, Agenda Item Four, Discussion and Possible Approval of a Policy Regarding Rainwater Tanks. Does Mr. Leffley have anything to say on this matter? I think he might have been the one who brought it up.
Yeah, I mean, they're big, they're oftentimes plastic in bright colors. People can put them anywhere, right in front of their house, in the back of the house, you know, halfway into the neighbor's yard, you know, there's lots of things about that could be problematic and they're becoming more popular. I am a big supporter of them. I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, they don't cause a big problem and block the view of these beautiful buildings we have.
Right, and I do think.
And they're not like right against the street in bright blue.
Right. I do think that, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, but I believe that the current regulation is pretty good, that we can use that to make sure they're underground or in a non-visible area. I, you know, I looked at that and I tried to figure out what else could be on there, and I thought that it was pretty, our current guideline is pretty good.
Would have obviously been sound significantly older or concealing a building or structures historic, features, materials, design elements, and/or the character of the historic district.
Right.
Which is very broad, but.
It is broad, but it, you know, it gives us some teeth.
Yeah.
And I, it hadn't really come up.
It hasn't come up, so do people just put them, they just don't even ask, they just put them up, right? I mean, I just stick them in their yard or side of the house.
You know, and that, there, again, we don't have enough people to do that all day long, but it's probably low-hanging fruit.
Do you think that, that they should be coming before the board with these tanks? Since it affects the district, that, that.
Well, because, based on our guidelines, I believe that we could do it administratively. Now, I know that puts more pressure on you.
That's really what I meant.
Yeah, I don't think.
There's, there's no permission granted right now, they're just being put up all over. That's the thing, that's what I'm saying, they're not even asking.
Yeah, it's kind of what the split units were like, you know, a year ago.
It puts you guys in a hard spot, because it's, once it's, once something is, is set up, it's hard to say, oh, you gotta undo that. It's a lot harder to say that than to say, no, you can't do that, right?
Well, but it's in our regulations, so we, they should be coming to us in some fashion.
I think so.
Yeah, so whatever that takes, but I don't think we need to rewrite the regulation. I think it's, it has enough teeth in it.
But how do you let people know that they need it? How, how do they know?
They could be noticed, you know, they don't have to be a notice, you know, the friendly notice that, you know, could be given, and they, if they don't come then, maybe they need to get some, you know, they are in violation technically, so they can get.
Like, they need.
They would need to come in.
A permit?
Well, need to apply. I think that it's something, if Hobbie has the time, that it could be taken care, yeah, that's a, that's a.
This tank was not associated with this house.
Wow.
Oh. And, and those people, well, I don't know if I could say, but that was not their tank, that's somebody else's, they could have as far as they could from their house.
Yes.
And it wound up in, right in somebody's face and blocking their view.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, that's not cool at all. Yeah, it's hard to see from this picture. Yeah. That's not, but that is, that is the case, and it can be very, very caseless.
I thought it was theirs, you know, I was thinking, okay, they, you know. Well, we know that that would be a violation according to our regulations.
Is it still there?
I believe it is, yeah.
Yeah, they're not gonna move it.
But can they be?
Make it to have it taken down?
Yeah.
Be told they can't do it? Or they have to put it underground?
Tell them that it's, it's just not appropriate to stick it in somebody else's face and away from yours. I just think, right, that's, and not absolutely.
And we do have, in our regulations, we have how that should be handled, and maybe it should be somewhere in a, in a shrub, or it should be underground, you know, that, those are all things we have in there.
Right, behind the house or even at low elevation, but.
Yeah, that was crazy.
But whose property is it on? Is it on their property?
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Yeah, they, we would have done something if it's on their, somebody else's property.
Oh, I see.
But it's like, you know.
Thanks. Right there. I see who did it.
It seems like a long way to drain their water.
That's so cool, man.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll do that.
I mean, we could lay down some, a few hot and fast rules, such as no tank should be placed visibly between the residence and the road on the street. I mean, there could be a few rules that we could, we could clarify. And, you know, if you have to have one of these, if you want to have one of these, put it, either bury it, if you want to put it in the front, bury it, or put it out back. But burying it is not an option in this rocky soil we have.
All right.
Right.
So, for most part. There are also some, you know, health risks you gotta think about, you know, when people have these big open-top tanks or mosquito nets, you know, and you gotta be careful with that. So I think some.
Well, that's not a danger.
Okay, so it's the usual, so it's.
I didn't want to say it out loud. That's funny, that's the first thing.
I think you're gonna see more of this, because people are becoming more environmentally conscious, or at least they see all this on TV.
Yeah.
And I know some other folks in Bisbee who've got these big commercial tanks that are not pretty at all. You know, they're plastic covered with metal reinforcement. I wouldn't want to have to look at that.
Right.
Now, these are hidden, which is probably fine, but they're not all nice ceramic pots, you know, that look.
Yeah.
So I think getting ahead of it a little bit might help, some basic, you know, high-level restrictions, if that's the right word, guidelines.
Well, are you gonna volunteer to put some teeth into this record? That's a good way to start the year off.
I'll make a delegation. Keep my mouth shut, I learned that fifty years ago. I'll, I'll make a stab at it. Is, is that all right? I'm sorry.
Oh, absolutely, I know, if, if you want to take a stab at it, or if Ben wants to, either one, if, you know, whoever's comfortable coming up with a more stringent guideline around this.
I kinda wanted to, you know, it's something I, I think about, and I just wanted to see where everyone else sat on this issue. And, you know, I think, even if somebody clad them and, and on the outside corrugated metal or wood, they'd look a whole lot better.
Yeah, or fenced it off or something.
Yeah.
So, so, Ben, will you put some teeth into the guidelines? Couple of sentences?
Yeah.
You're all right.
Excellent choice. I think number eight is good for that.
Yeah, so, okay, so, Mr. Leffley is going to adapt the current guideline, put a little more teeth into it for the water tanks, and then we will be voting on approval at a future special session.
And I would like to add that it's the same, you know, I've been saying and preaching to the choir, I know, but we can't have rules that Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Ward cannot enforce. And they have enough to do, so we have to, you know, we can pick the violations, those are pretty easy to see. Uh, and they have enough to do, so we have to, you know, we can pick the violations, those are pretty easy to see when you see them. But I, I, I just wanna temper it, because, you know, soon, there's only gonna be Mr. Rodriguez in, in the, uh, in the department, and that's gonna be tough. So we don't wanna, you know, I, I just think having regulations that we can't enforce is, is counterproductive.
For us to not have any.
Right, right.
We don't want them to not have anything to do.
Well, he has, he has plenty, believe me, he has plenty to do.
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, okay.
We'll put a manual on it.
What?
Okay, well, thank you, Ben, we appreciate it. Um, okay. Okay, now we're discussion and possible approval of a policy regarding six-foot fences alongside of public stairways. Six-foot fences.
Can I make a comment?
No. But if Mr. Taylor would like to make a comment.
He's here, I, I'll recognize him. These stairs, to me, are streets, they're.
We believe they are, yeah.
Yeah, they are streets.
Yeah, they're streets.
And Ivan, Mrs. Ward, has a great idea that we name them, I think they should be named, that'd be great. But anyway, they, they, uh, they are streets, and therefore I think they should have a four-foot, uh, maximum.
There's so many places where you go up, and they're just like walking through a little slip canyon.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's not, people cannot appreciate our historic district and our historic structures.
If they can't see them.
If they, if they can't see them, and I know people want their privacy, but there's something you give up when you move into a historic district too.
Now granted, there may be a ten-foot wall, and then a four-foot fence on it, so you got fourteen feet, but.
And what can you do about that?
Yeah, but that's the way it goes.
So if it's a city maintained, but which stairway?
They all, yes, if it's not a private stair, yes.
Okay, should we make a motion on this and vote on it?
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, I move that, uh, let's see. Well, we don't have a real number here.
On agenda item, agenda item five.
Yeah, agenda, agenda item five.
It's right here, bottom of this page, right there.
Um. I move that we require, uh, fences along public stairways to be no, no taller than four feet.
I second, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oh, against say nay? Okay, the ayes have it unanimously, so that's, that's now our standard.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, are current violators grandfathered? Are the current violators grandfathered?
Yes, they would, yes.
I think you have, yeah.
Okay, well, moving forward.
Moving right on. Agenda item six, our favorite topic of all, the discussion and possible approval of a policy regarding windows. When, where, and if they can be used, defining terms, and if the policy is set, there can be no exceptions.
Kinda gonna fall into that same.
I, I really, I'm just wondering if anybody wants to say anything about it. I think we, we've sort of beaten it to death in, in other meetings, that we know what we.
Yeah.
Um, and then you, when I'll throw on the paper, then you guys can, yeah, you can comment on that.
What I'm thinking.
There's like five different types of windows we could possibly have, so let's, let's, uh.
I have a question, um, on the topic. Um, I understand what a wood window is, I don't understand, I know what a vinyl clad or aluminum clad wood window is. To me, if you've got a vinyl clad or a wood clad, it's not a wood window anymore.
You're right.
It looks like a vinyl.
But it is on the interior, that's why people like them, but they.
On the interior, that's, yeah, you know, and I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, I agree, um, but, you know, you do have to, uh, consider, you know, the maintenance, and.
Wake up with wood siding.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, not, not synthetic.
And, and I do remember Mr. Green, our former teammate here, uh, several years ago, said that he had gone through all of his windows one week at a time. Taking all the glass out, restored the wood, you know, put the Bondo in and whatever he needed, and put them back together. I was so happy with that, and, you know, 'cause you get the wavy glass, you get, you know, you get the, the feel, the mutton, you can't duplicate the mutton or the O-T curve on certain, uh, uh, windows.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Do, now, would we allow, would we allow a storm window to, if you wanna maintain your windows? Um, back in Pennsylvania, we all had storm windows which went on the outside, which gave you tremendous air gap, and were very effective, but do we, people don't use those here?
They don't, and it's odd, because they have the same problem in opposite, they have heat.
Yeah.
There is a storm window, I don't know if you guys have seen them or, or had dealt with them, but there is a storm window for the interior. And I've often thought that would be a good thing.
Absolutely.
There was, there was a customer that hadn't, was showing me that if they had their, their friction fit on there, and they had to pop right out within a second.
Yeah.
And it was really, it was really nice.
Yeah, I would think it would do the same thing, you're just now using your old window as the, as the exterior.
Storm window.
Yeah, and I, I think, maybe that's something we, we, I, maybe I'll take that on and put it in the matrix, that that would be an alternative.
So it's still not gonna protect the wood?
No, no, but.
But you get the double gla, the effect of double glaze, presumably you could put some reflective glass on that, I don't know.
You could, you probably could, yeah. The, the great thing, and this is something, uh, that, and I think Joe will back me up, and Ben will probably back me up on this, is that um, the old growth timber, which is what a lot of the windows, you know, a lot of this lumber came out of the Siskiis up in Oregon that came here, 'cause the same company's on the railroad and the land up there, and so that's why the, the, the boxcar siding, uh, that three-quarter inch with batton on the outside has lasted, you know, I, I've got that on, on the house in itself.
Old growth had a resistance to decay, but the new growth does not.
Right, and so, yeah, and so, old windows restored probably last longer than new wood windows. I, I, um, our house, there's, uh, a section that was done in nineteen sixty-one, I think somebody wrote on it, that's how I know. And they put board and batton on it, the boards are all warped on that, it's a small little piece, but they're all warped. The boards and batton that were done in eighteen eighty are still in perfect shape. So anyway, um, I think for that one, I can, I can.
It's similar thing, like, you know, new construction, non-contributing, there'll be some exceptions.
Yeah.
But for the contributing structures, yeah, okay, so the window is no longer viable, um, you need to put something in that is.
Yeah, and there are, the clad is really good, the, the, um, I, it's not something I like, but.
I think it's a good compromise.
Yeah, it's a compromise, at, at least there's wood in there, and you've sort of waterproofed it, um.
And, and I think if you, if the design is, if it was a double hung window, you'd wanna put a double hung window back, you know? That type of thing, I, I will have to face that in the lower section of my home, that's all.
In that, Joe, I'm gonna ask you, the, uh, replacement of all windows in a house, doesn't that trigger that they have to be double insulated?
Replacement of any window.
Oh, is it of any window?
You're, you're gonna wind up with, with dual blades, yeah.
But if you pull your window out, you, you pull your frames out and rebuild them like Mr. Green did, you would.
There's no such requirement.
Yeah, that's what I.
If you're replacing the window unit?
Yeah.
You, you gotta meet the, the, um, the energy code.
Okay, okay, so that, you know, that's the trigger for money.
If it's in cool there, if it's in broad, you don't care if it's in.
Right, right. But in a, in a.
Well, that's, that's interesting, 'cause that may be an incentive for people not to replace the window, to fix up what they've got, otherwise they require to put in something completely.
Now, a lot of these windows in town are the same dimensions, you know, it's a very standard dimension, I can't remember what the dimension is, but it's very standard. If they bought a used window and replaced the sash in, in their existing window, would that trigger the, the energy? You wouldn't know, right?
It's nice.
No, but I mean.
I think, I think they're replacing, um, components of a window that, that, if the energy code would not.
Right, yeah, just pull the stops and put the new frames in.
Right, and if you're, you're under the code, you gotta meet it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're gonna put this in the matrix.
Yeah, it's going in the matrix. We're burying Doug here.
Shovel pool by shovel pool.
One more quickly, what are we, what are we saying now about storm windows? Where did we leave that?
This is, he's gonna write up a recommendation for possible use of internal storm windows?
Well, I mean, that, that should be, it's, it is a way to achieve some degree of, uh.
Protection.
Environmental stability, but it, it's, it's not a.
Not a man.
But you're saying interior storm windows.
Yeah, right, so that the window shows and becomes, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I see that.
Okay, okay, so, um, agenda item six, we have discussed. We're tabling approval until the next special session. Okay, agenda item seven.
A regular session?
Oh, the regular session or a special session?
Uh, I think we're doing regular session.
Regular session, till a future regular session, okay. The next one, is that what we're saying? Well, we're gonna be there a long time, it's special, but it should be, it should be bang, 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 right?
Well, yeah, it'll be, nothing else, we'll postpone it again.
Okay.
We'll have a discussion, but it, and it probably will be, but it should, in two or three, it should be something we come up with.
Yeah.
'Cause we can mold whatever.
Okay.
I'll just throw something out that you guys can then comment on, on that, and then I think we have some other things that are gonna be, um.
'Cause I'm already tired, and I'm thinking about the next one, it's making.
You should have made it a pizza night.
Mike, look, I wanna just, just tap on a couple of these tapped on to each regular session.
Yeah, space them, space them out.
That's smart.
Mm-hmm, it's a good idea.
So for number, did you, did you announce number seven?
No, um, okay, oh, okay, discussion and possible direction regarding charging for renewals of approvals, like if they've gone past their year and they wanna renew their approvals.
Inspire, yeah.
So will they then come back to be on the agenda and then come before the board again?
Yes, that's, that's what I was gonna get at, is that I do think that they need to pay a new, uh, application fee and come before the board, and they're at, it doesn't, we had one about three months ago that we, we went ahead and said, yeah, you had it, and you know, during COVID, we did a lot of this, because they couldn't get to it, I get, I get that. But the, my thing on number seven is, yes, they should be charged for renewals. It's paperwork, it's your time, and you, you review, and we review, uh, and that they must come before us.
They need to make the window opportunity, it's not the city of Bisbee's fault.
Right, exactly, and I do think that they're at the discretion of whatever board's sitting at that time. Uh, Mr. Lepley has made reference to two years ago, maybe these would have gotten through, maybe this time it won't, sorry. It's the way it went, you know, we're not gonna, uh.
No, we can't grandfather just because we said something two years ago.
Yes, because right now, you look at this, you're born two years ago, you're the only one left.
Oh, look at that.
Also, yes, you're the only one left on that one too.
Wait, how long have I been here?
Well, you've been here too, yes, that's right.
I think I've been here.
Yeah, you have, because you're renewed.
Yeah, I've renewed.
So I think that that one, you know, we could vote on that one, and get it off the plate.
Okay, um, I make a motion on agenda item seven, discussion and possible direction regarding charging for renewals of approvals, that we do charge the application fee again, and that they have to come back before the board.
Yeah. I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Taylor, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all against say nay? Okay, the ayes have it unanimously, uh, so we are gonna recommend this, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item eight, discussion and possible approval of guidelines for solar installations in the historic district. Uh, okay. I think one of the things that we want is that they're flush with the roof line, is that not correct? You don't want the, these weird solar panels that are sticking up and at angles and.
Parallel to the roof line.
Parallel to the roof line, thank you.
May I?
You may.
Okay, so, uh, procedure, three procedure, number three procedures, if you go to B eleven, it says that no device, uh, solar devices that do not exceed a height of more than six feet above the roof surface, I think that.
It should have been inches.
Inches, okay, good, so that one, let's, inches. And then, i- if I might continue, uh, under number two, types of solar, B and C, I think for the historic district are, for one, I don't think there's real estate in old Bisbee four freestanding.
Except them a lot right next to my house.
Do they have?
The huge ones in front of the garrets.
Oh. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, they're giant.
I had forgotten about those, yeah.
No, how does that even happen?
Okay, so they, yeah, they, I think, okay, so I would leave B and C.
Those are grandfathered in.
Yeah, but I would leave B and C as, uh, you know, the, the freestanding and parking lot canopy, we'll just put that in, it would have to come before uh, planning, uh, the, wherever we are, uh, historic, uh, DRB, yeah, DRB, I'm on too many.
Who are we? Where are we? What day is it?
You can catch me here every week.
Yeah.
I think that's okay to keep those in there, and if we change feet to inches, uh, on number eleven, then I'm good with, uh, with this.
Okay, anybody else have, um, opinions?
Well, I got an opinion, you know, each, each installation's gonna be pretty unique.
Yes.
And there're gonna have to be exceptions, my, my overall feeling is, you really can't stop somebody from putting up solar.
Oh, we're not trying to, 'cause it's like chimneys, you know, a hundred years ago, everybody had to have a chimney.
Yeah.
I think this is a techno, what is great about solar compared to a chimney is, they can be removed in a day from, from a roof, when the next, you know, the giant funnel.
Technology.
Yeah, the next technology come. The, the other thing that I, that I'm sorry to point out here is that six fifteen is redundant, the, uh, item six fifteen, solar energy devices, the list is redundant with something that was in the previous, uh, written portion under, um, what is it there, that, uh, the guidelines for solar that we were just talking about, lists under, uh, in, I think it's under fast track, it lists exactly, no, it's under, uh, recommended and not recommended, it does, it just duplicates that. Maybe we need to look, look at that and sort of drop back, but, um, I feel like on the six fifteen, six point one five, solar energy devices, and if you go to C, and then you look at that list, one through eight, it's the same list, it's actually one through eleven, it's the same list as, as the other one.
I don't have that handy, but, you know.
And Bob, that was the reason why we were going over this list, so they could make it easier for people to get, because of the administrative approval being added, because so much of the board's time has been eaten up lately, approving, um, easily approved solar devices.
Yeah, no, I understand, but, you know, some, some people's interpretation of solar devices could be pretty ugly, right? They're not all photovoltaic.
No, no, but they, they, we do have that requirement that they can't stick up more than six inches, so nobody really sees, it's like the water, uh, conservation.
Right.
It, it has to happen, you know?
Yeah.
These devices are part of our energy and climate control.
No, I, I'm, I'm aware of that, are we covered for somebody?
We just wanna stop things like this from happening.
Yeah, you know, let's say they want to put up a hot water type solar system, and those pipes can get pretty doggone ugly.
Yeah, and that is in here that we can do that, it is, the solar hot water is in these regulations as allowable. So, you know, it can be ugly, and some chimneys are ugly.
Sure.
Some split units are ugly, you know, some air conditioning, some, you know, a, some people think a swamp cooler is ugly, but it's necessary.
Right.
It was the technology of, you know, 40 years ago.
But do we have enough teeth to say, let's say, you know, the pipes run on the backside of the house and not through the middle of the front window?
I don't know, maybe, I haven't looked at it from that point of view, I don't know, maybe we should drop back and look at this again.
Yeah, have we run across this situation with the type of technology you're talking about?
I could imagine, well, that's just like we were talking about the many splits before, several months ago, that they were running these things, these host sets, in places that were very inappropriate.
Yeah, right across the front, yeah.
And if you did the same thing, but then it would have to come before the board, not, it would be applicable for it to come before the board.
Yeah.
Where the board would decide these things instead of administrated, which would be outside of our purview because it's visible.
And this is, this brings up what I've been worrying about, is the erosion is, that it comes to us and we look at it and we go, eh, okay, that, those pipes are okay.
Because it's solar.
Yeah, and then it turns out it's a contributing building, you know, luckily that those pipes can be removed easily off of a roof, but we allow things like a vinyl window or...
It's an entry for intrusions.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't want the board to have to do that, although, as Mr. Gaffer has said, then they have a resource for that or an alternative, they can go to the Board of Adjustment if they feel like they were wronged.
A good solid fallback position, that would be a good thing to have for these kind of regulations.
Yes.
Okay, so are we saying that we should add a section that actually deals with the conduits and the placement of the converter or inverters and that sort of thing? Do we want to have a?
Or are we saying that that can't be administratively approved, that we need to see it if it's that kind of...
Well, there is, there's a great deal that can be administratively approved, but if it's something that, and I think this happens, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you don't see something that you feel is your purview to do, you send us anyway.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think we're safe on that one. I do think, weirdly, that, because I'm piling it on myself, I think if I can come up with a matrix that, for each item that we, you know...
You want to do a matrix for this one?
Well, I'm thinking that if we had a prototype, yeah, on the matrix, yeah, Keanu Reeves, I know I look like him, so that's...
You're both such good guys, you and Keanu.
But I do think that if I come up with a format that we can agree to, even if it's just one, that that can be extrapolated out to the, all the issues, and that might help us if it's tied into each chapter.
Yes.
You know, so let's see how that goes.
I just think that perhaps, and that maybe it's in here, I'm missing it, that it ought to be a section, a paragraph, whatever, that says you must take every, make every effort to run conduits, placement of panel and so on as inconspicuously
Yeah, exactly.
As possible, particularly in public facing areas or something like that.
And I think it's in there, but I...
All right, man. I was just interrupting by saying I like that.
Yeah, I think it's great.
As inconspicuous as possible.
I think it's in there, but I would like to maybe table this to reread now that we sort of have a discussion and see if we agree, and I do, I don't know, it struck me that this was redundant. I'd like to go through that instead of eliminating anything at this time.
Okay, so agenda item eight, you're tabling...
Okay, everybody, really quickly, you changed battery?
I changed battery, okay.
Let's all trade...
Everybody just relax.